And I guess we will get started with page one, item number one, Bill four dash twenty-one. Mr. Leonard Howie, National Disclosed Worker Grant.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. It's great to see everybody. The administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation of federal funds totaling eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars to the National Dislocated Worker Grant Gifts and Grant Fund Program. The funds will be used for the salary and benefit costs for existing department staff and other expenses in order to assist twenty-five county residents impacted by unexpected layoffs or job loss due to the COVID-19 pandemic by alleviating barriers in obtaining employment. The grant period is from October first, twenty 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 through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. No county matching funds are required.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of anyone? Bearing none, Mr. Howie will move right along to page four, Bill twenty-one, Port Infrastructure Development Program.
Okay, the administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation of federal funds totaling nine million eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the Port Infrastructure Development Program Gifts and Grants Fund Program. The funds will be used to support port upgrades and infrastructure improvements at the Trade Point Atlantic site in Sparrow's Point as part of the Sparrow Point's bulk expansion rail modernization and birth rehabilitation Mid-Atlantic multimodal transportation hub project. The county intends to re-grant the funds to Trade Point Marine Development LLC, a subsidiary of Trade Point Atlantic. This is the second grant from the United States Department of Transportation to Baltimore County for the development of the port. The first was a twenty million dollar transportation investment generating Economic Recovery Fund, the Tiger Grant, awarded in twenty eighteen, which was part of an overall fifty-seven million dollar project. The remaining thirty-seven million dollars for the project were TPA matching funds. The grant period is April first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The department advised that the grant period may change and/or may be extended based on the execution dates of the grant agreements. No county matching funds are required.
Thank you very much, Mr. Howie. Are there any questions by anyone? Bearing none.
Mr. Chair, I think Councilman Marks had something to say.
Oh, Councilman Marks?
Well, thank you. Thank you. I don't want to steal your thunder, Todd, because I know you've done so much work down here. I've said it before, I'm really happy that this administration has jumped on on board with getting more federal grants. The Tiger Program was being created by the Obama administration just as I was leaving U S D O T to serve on the council, and the idea was that you would have really big projects that you'd be funding through the Tiger Program. And, you know, for many years, the administrations here never wanted to take advantage of these grant programs. And I think they help with things both big and small. So I just wanted to thank the administration. I was down recently touring Trade Point Atlantic. Councilman Crandall, you've done a lot of work there, and I commend you and the county executive for going after these type of projects.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any additional comments?
Mr. Chair, just to chime in, a comment that Councilman Marks has made over the last couple of years resonates with me is that and this is, David, you didn't want to steal my thunder, but I'm going to steal your line, is that almost every major economic development project in the history of the United States, and David's smiling at this because he knows I'm stealing his line, has been a public-private partnership with respect to transportation. So I want to thank the administration and the executives at Trade Point Atlantic for taking advantage of this program. And David, you just toured Trade Point Atlantic, what, a week or two ago? The magnitude of the progress there and the job development and and commerce that is rolling through that thirty-one hundred acres is absolutely incredible, considering that just six or seven years ago, the site was dead and not really contributing to much of anything. So a lot of people deserve a lot of credit for the success of this program and not the program, but the development itself. And we should take advantage of these public-private partnerships to continue the development there. It is a major driver of commerce in not only the southeastern part of Baltimore County, but in the state of Maryland and the eastern seaboard. So I'm hoping my colleagues can get on board with taking this ten million, now almost ten million dollar grant from the federal government. Mr. Howie, thank you for your work on it. Appreciate it.
I don't know about you, Councilman Marks and Councilman Crandall, but I don't like taking handouts. No, but really, I appreciate your comments, and I have to say I agree with everything Councilman Marks and Councilman Crandall said. I also guess take this opportunity to thank the other council members. I mean, we were there all the way, being the biggest cheerleader and the biggest supporter of Trade Point Atlantic. And when you go there and you see all the jobs that it has created and you see traffic again coming out of Sparrow's Point, you guys know that you're doing the right thing, and we've been extremely supportive, made some very tough votes. And I'm happy to Trade Point Atlantic do well, and Mr. Howie, we happy and welcome that ten million dollars.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a comment. I know that in jest you were saying we want to keep that ten million dollars. It wasn't more than maybe six years ago when the state gave back to the federal government over nine hundred million dollars in a transit line that was meant for Baltimore City and Baltimore County. So yes, I agree with you. Take advantage of those federal resources, and let's keep those federal resources here in Baltimore County.
Absolutely, absolutely correct. Any more questions or comments about the Trade Point Atlantic, ten million dollars, Mr. Howie, or the red line? Okay, moving right along. Thank you very much. Ms. Terry Hickey, you wanted to come up. You're on page ten. Bill nine dash twenty-one, Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Very good. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Indeed, I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of Bill nine twenty-one. It's a request for a supplemental budget appropriation representing an award in the amount of twenty-four million seven hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars from the U.S. Department of the Treasury. In mid-January, the county was informed that it was eligible for funding through the Treasury's new Emergency Rental Assistance Program, or E-RAP. Funds were made available to local jurisdictions and populations over two hundred thousand people and are focused on assisting households impacted by COVID-19 by addressing both rental and utility payments. I know the council asks this question often, so I'll put it out there. This again is a program not designed to help homeowners. This is designed specifically for rental and utility arrears related to housing stability. Specifically, funds are received to households unable to pay rent or utilities due to the pandemic. What's very unique about this funding is it allows us to go back up to twelve months, which would allow us to cover arrears at the very beginning of the pandemic forward. It also allows us to pay prospective rent. So if we have a family that has lost all income, is sitting there with a large rental debt they may never hope to overcome, but they're looking to get back to work, we could cure that arrears, make the landlord whole, and then pay a portion or all of that rent moving forward for three months while we connect that family with case management, with Director Howie's Workforce Services or other programs throughout the county. So we're very excited about the flexibility that this funding affords. We're going to put this into the county's existing eviction prevention strategy, which to date has allowed us to avert, even though there's a moratorium, it's allowed us to avert at least on paper over fifteen hundred evictions to date. But this almost twenty-five million dollars is a major investment in the county's efforts to help keep people in their homes.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Hickey. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Hickey, so there's a moratorium on evictions in process. So just so I correctly understand this, are these funds intended to address evictions that are going to take place once the moratorium is lifted? I didn't quite understand that point.
Our job is to avert the chance of eviction once the moratorium is lifted. So when I said on paper, what I meant was, at this point, we have families that owe so much when the moratorium expires on the end of March. So right now, the courts are expected to reopen mid-March. The federal moratorium would end March thirty-first. We'd expect to see evictions beginning to be processed. That's when we think we're going to see formal court action. At this point, we're dealing with a rental arrears only, without the requirement of an actual eviction notice.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any additional comments or questions?
Okay, Mr. Hickey, let me just say that.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering the extent of the problem. I mean, when I hear March, I mean, it's not that far from now. Do we have any idea of what, how severe this problem is and how we're going to address it so that as few families as possible are negatively affected?
Sure, it's a great question. It helps to have a large incoming pot of money represented by this because it's really hard to do an exact accounting of what we're going to be facing in the coming months. I can tell the council, we had fifteen hundred applications to our first eviction prevention round back in June. We kept this current eviction prevention model open for the last few months. We have over six thousand applications intake forms for that. What we don't know yet, Councilmen, are the number of families out there who owe money but haven't taken any effort to seek help yet until the courts start reopening. So we're doing our best to get numbers in advance of that. As we know anything, we'll share it with you. But that's a sense of the scope of the problem right now.
I, am I still on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. As I've spoken to some owners of apartment developments, men have programs where they're know that they have problems and, you know, want to work them out in the long run, whether it's, you know, paying two-thirds of the rent and the arrears that build up. I get the idea that these landlords are not going to go after these families with the eviction. So from what you're telling me about the problem in a situation like that, where it appears that the landlords will not go after eviction as long as the renter continues to live up to whatever was offered them to stay in their apartment, I guess this grant is not eligible for a situation like that?
See, that's the interesting thing about the time we're in. Normally, eviction prevention programs are triggered by an eviction notice, which really almost forces a landlord to take the tenant to court. The great thing about this is any tenant in the county can apply for support. Under the new rules of the money that we're asking to appropriate tonight, landlords can apply on behalf of their tenant for whatever reason, which empowers landlords to take that step. And then I think many on the council are aware that for the past few months, we've been using money from the state and federal government to work directly with the management companies of our largest landlords in the county to do massive eradication of rental debt for vulnerable families living in those units. And in fact, working with the United Way, we were able to remove the arrears of almost a thousand families totaling over four million dollars. So that was all done without the need to go to court, and in fact, landlords that participated in that program agreed to dismiss any eviction cases against those families as long as they participated.
I think this is another example of an administration that is working very hard to help people who are truly in need. I am so glad to hear what I'm hearing. And I guess the only thing we don't know is, when all is said and done, how much money the county's going to have to print. We don't print money, by the way.
Well, we'll keep looking to Congress to help us on that.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, thank you.
Chair, I have a comment as well. Mr. Chair, still there?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Rogers. I was only.
Okay, I'd also like to say that as a result of the innovative strategies that we're using here in the county, that has been recognized. Other jurisdictions have reached out to look at the creative partnership with United Way of Central Maryland. Also, monies that the state then gave to United Way, additional money gone with foreign issue. Ask the United Way. The state gave some additional money, and of course, our our monies be used by first, it's then. Because we were looking at timeline at time. But our innovative approach to this is definitely hallmark. So Councilmember Catch, we thank you for acknowledging our willingness to try different strategies and of course, having Ms. Hickey here with us to help move in a direction that they have different prior years. But when you compare the numbers that Mr. Hickey articulated, that's considerably more evictions, of course, than what we have ever experienced which is the same across country. So when the moratorium on evictions is lifted, we do have a brewing issue coming. So we do have to follow closely, but fortunately, we've been able to mitigate some of that, but we're not out of the woods yet.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. I would like to guess take this opportunity to thank the administration and certainly thank you, Mr. Hickey and now Department of Housing. You know, it's no doubt about it that there are a lot of people suffering out there, and this money will be a godsend. And even though we don't have a, even though we have this moratorium on evictions right now, that does not mean that people aren't lying awake at night worried about it, worrying about when that day is going to come and worrying about how can they possibly dig themselves out of this hole when they don't even have a job at this time. We see the efforts from the federal government in terms of trying to get more money to people, and we've seen where that has been sort of lagging, and we hope that that can be resolved. And, you know, we guess, we certainly hope and pray that all the people that are in a very dire straits can get the help that they need. And one day, we can look at COVID in the rearview mirror and move on to where we should be in terms of prosperity and keep a living alive. So I welcome the twenty-four million. I welcome all the efforts from the administration, and I'm sure it would do some good, and I am very hopeful, even though we are worried about a tsunami of eviction. I am very hopeful that this twenty-four million will put a serious dent into the number of evictions that come forward. So any additional comments or questions before we move on? All right, moving right along to page fourteen with Major Daniel. Let me see, Calazza? Is that right?
Calazza, sir.
Calazza. I missed that. Okay.
That's okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. I appreciate it. I'm here presenting, Colonel Leavak was under the weather today, so I'm taking care of this for him. It's in regards to a contract with National Medical Services Incorporated, also known as NMS Incorporated. And it's the third and last award resulting from a Baltimore County Request for Proposal Number Two Five Nine due on five fourteen of twenty twenty. The other two awardees are Bodhi Cell Mark and DNA Labs International. Those two awards were presented to and approved by the county council at the twelve-seven twenty session. NMS Labs contract approved approval lagged behind the other two because they proposed standard language clause concerns after the purchasing division forwarded the draft contracts for their signature. And, you know, I was advised that contractors are requested to identify concerns of this nature when they respond to the solicitation. NMS did not express their concerns until they received the contracts to sign. Their proposed changes needed review by the Office of Law. Negotiation on the clause revisions took place and agreement was reached, but approval of the NMS contract was delayed and unable to be obtained at the same county council session as the other awards for RFP P two five nine. The funding sources noted in the original council action request form documents are still current and valid. NMS will only perform analysis on CDS as noted in the master agreement four four oh six, created last August by the purchasing division. And that was not at that time to exceed twenty-five thousand before council approval. Once the contract is approved, that restriction will be removed and the master agreement revised to include the council approval date. Funding for the services to be approved by NMS is covered in the sources noted in the council action request form and is anticipated to be twenty percent of the overall total. A prorated note on that for this contract is, over the course, is one thirty-seven, three sixty-four, and that comes out of the operating budget.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you very much, Major Dan.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Moving right along to page eighteen. Elizabeth Sacks, Director of Government Reform and Strategic Initiatives, to tell us about operational efficiency.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Public Works LLC to provide consulting services for improving operational efficiencies and identifying potential cost savings for both Baltimore County Government and the Baltimore County Public School System. The contract timeframe will commence upon approval by council of the contract and will last for six months with a possibility of an extension of time, but the total amount of the contract will not exceed one point two million for the entire term. This initiative is part of fulfilling the enterprise-wide strategic plan, and we are very pleased that this consulting firm was selected in a joint procurement with the school system. And of thirteen proposals, we selected as a group unanimously this vendor in particular because of their deep subject matter expertise in both county and state governments as well as school systems. So we are looking forward to commencing this work upon approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sacks. Are there any questions from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I believe that was Councilman Patel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Sacks, is this what I guess would be termed a performance contract where we expect that the savings will exceed the contract amount? And if it does, does the consultant share in any of those savings? Or is it just the county and the school system? And then how is that split up in terms of the savings?
So the consultant does not share in any of the savings. It is a fixed fee contract. Generally speaking, we understand that the amount of projected savings based on their other work will exceed the contract amount, but it will not be shared with the consultant. They will do separate assessment of county government and the school system, and I will have to get back to the details on how any savings might be allocated. This is a collaborative effort, but the county is contractor for the consultant.
Gotcha. Is it possible to structure the contract in such a way that any savings for the school system are directed back into the classroom rather than into administration of classrooms?
I am going to defer, if I might.
I think Ms. Rogers has her hands up, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Patel, that wouldn't be a decision of the contractor with the county executive. Because what the contractor will do is identify areas and opportunities for savings and efficiency in terms of our operation, and then that would be integrated in our deliberative process of the budget. The contractor really is not a part of the decision-making terms of the fund.
All right, thank you for that clarification, both Ms. Sacks and Ms. Rogers.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Marks.
Yeah, thank you. I do want to thank Ms. Sacks and her team for briefing me on this. One of the things I mentioned when I met with them was the need to look at construction costs in the school budget. You know, for the years I've been on the council, we've constantly talked about how expensive it is to build schools in Baltimore County relative to Hartford or Howard Counties. And I just wanted to clarify with Ms. Sacks that that is a major thrust of the study, correct?
Of the school system side, yes. We will be looking at that area as well as other operations within the school system.
Yeah, I think that's very timely since it looks like the legislature will override the governor's veto of Kerwin, and that will put in place the Build to Learn legislation. So very timely exercise, and Ms. Sacks, thank you for briefing me.
Any additional questions or comments? What, Ms. Sacks, I guess like to take this opportunity to thank the administration for putting forward this initiative. So many times, we have a tendency to do what we've always done just because, and we all pat each other on the back all the time and swear that what we doing is the best. So it is good to have someone from the outside come in, take a look at our processes, and take a look at how we allocate monies and how we spend the taxpayers' hard-earned money and make sure that we are utilizing best practices and being good source of the citizens' money. And to your point, Councilman Patel, I would hope, and I'm almost certain, that any savings that we derive from becoming more efficient and lean and doing the right things in terms of processes, that money will go further towards providing services to the citizen, whether that be additional monies in the classrooms or additional roads being paid or additional bench in a park or whatever. We don't know what the savings are until we take a look at it and see. So I welcome the investment, and one million dollars is a very small amount compared to our almost four billion dollar operation. So if we can find some savings there, I'm all for it, and it'll be money well spent. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure. On that note, what we would do is move right along to number, page twenty-three, Resolution sixteen dash twenty-one. This is by the administration. This is Deandra Walker, deal with the ten-year solid waste management claim.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the council. The administration is proposing an amendment to Baltimore County's ten-year solid waste management 10-year solid waste management plan regarding recycling in office buildings in Baltimore County. The amendment would add new language requiring office buildings with 150,000 square feet or more of office space to collect and market recyclable materials. Each owner of an office building that falls within the square footage specified above must provide recycling, uh, receptacles to collect the materials and a system to remove the materials as determined by the county. Newly constructed office buildings with use, uh, and permits issued after October 1st, 2021 that meet the requirements of the Office Building Recycling Program under section 9-1714 of the environmental article shall begin participating in the program within three months of being notified by Baltimore County specifically. The owner and corporate management company or tenants of each office building will monitor the collection and the materials. Baltimore County will notify the owners and corporate management companies of the implementation requirements in accordance with section 9-1703 and 9-1714 of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Uh, Baltimore County Planning Board, the Department of Planning, they both held a public hearing on the amendment on November 5th. The board approved, uh, the Office Building Recycling Amendment on November 19th, 2020, and the Department of Public Works accepted the comments through December 5th, 2020.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? I would like to, uh.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go right ahead. Councilman Crandall.
Thank you. Um, just, uh, uh, Ms. Walker, uh, to your knowledge, what, what extent has the, the CEQ um, uh, been involved in the development of this, uh, of the 10-year solid waste program? Uh, because I know that they had, uh, as a commission, they had, um, uh, some issues surrounding commercial businesses and their ability to recycle materials, uh, particularly uh, something I think that Councilwoman Evans is, is more than aware of. Um, uh, shrink wrap that comes off of boats every spring. Um, uh, I know that there, there are, there are, are, are folks that have expressed to the CEQ that, um, uh, recycling be available to those types of businesses. And I've also talked to some businesses, um, in, in the food and beverage industry that would, would like to see their, their bottles and cans picked up. Um, not so much of an issue, uh, during COVID, but certainly, uh, an issue and a recycling opportunity. So are, are you aware of discussions with the CEQ or has the CEQ weighed in?
I would have to.
To the development of the plan.
Right. To this amendment specifically, I'm, I'm assuming is what you're referring to. I would have to, um, do some research and figure out if they have been a part of discussions previously.
Okay, fair enough.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I have, um.
Yes, Ms. Rogers.
Um, Ms., uh, Councilmember Patoka, in our last session, you asked, um, questions specific to amendments to the 10-year plan and I stated that it's periodic. Um, I also, um, was advised recently during our discussions that amendments can be presented to, uh, for consideration if there are certain activities that entities would like to, uh, uh, have happen or they want to request, uh, to do something that would require, um, an amendment to the 10-year plan. So in addition to the, the, the cycled, um, uh, changes and like this issue, this is to come in compliance with, um, um, Maryland code, uh, the state stakehold, there are other opportunities that amendments can be presented in consideration. I just wanted to update you, um, since I provided, um, the statement that it was on, you know, a specific site.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So thank you, Ms. Rogers, for following up on that, uh, the solid waste work group, as you know. Uh, the, the marching orders from the county executive are that nothing is off the table. And so as we're looking at a comprehensive, our comprehensive capacity to manage our solid waste all the way from who's, how we take it out to the can, who picks it up, how it's picked up, how it's transported, uh, what fuel is used in that transport, um, how it ends up in a landfill or how, you know, what our capacity of recycling is. So the broad nature of, uh, of what we're looking at and also want to commend Ms. Walker. She's really done a great job at leading the solid waste work group. Uh, there's likely to be something substantive that we may need to, uh, revisit the 10-year solid waste plan as, uh, as the work group moves forward with its recommendations.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I, um, respond?
Ms. Rogers.
Uh, Mr., I mean, Councilmember Patoka, that would be a step in the process. Once we, um, have the, the recommendations and those recommendations are accepted by the county. And of course, we do have a, a, uh, public comment period coming up on, uh, March the 4th at one of our full work groups. Uh, we would take those and make the amendment. When cycled change came up recently, um, we were like, well, what happens with all the work we've just embarked on? We were advised that we can make adjustments, um, as we go forward and adopt certain aspects that will need to, uh, have a limit in the solid waste plan. So opportunity is not just set down that we. But of course, we have to also make that proposal in terms of the budget. You know, those things need to have funded.
Yeah, some have significant budget implications. So I think all that's, uh, stay, I would just say, stay tuned, right?
Correct, because we now have to take the sub-work group, uh, recommendations, uh, back to the full work group coming up.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? I would like to, uh, just take this opportunity to thank you, Mrs. Walker and Director Lycan, uh, at an issue from a constituent. And, uh, I was able to reach out to both of you and get that issue resolved in a very reasonable amount of time. And I think this speaks to, uh, your commitment to citizens of Baltimore County and your commitment to, uh, your job and doing it well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Next, we will move on to, uh, Mr. Secretary, we're going to skip, uh, the items on 25 or can we, or should we, uh, deal with the first one? Which is the road revitalization district. I'll just say, I'll just, I'll, I'll speak on that, which is basically we're trying to, uh, create an environment where we can infuse some capital into a major intersection of a road, uh, that hasn't seen a lot of improvement in many, many years. And on that note, if there's no questions or comments, I'll just move forward to page 7, Bill 6 dash 21, which is, uh, permitted use in the business local zone. Once again, that's a bill I'm putting forward, 6 dash 21. That's a case where, uh, to my colleagues that, um, the changes we are making are very narrowly defined with specific area in my district. Uh, with a specific item in mind in terms of trying to foster some economic development to a property that's been, uh, sitting idle for quite some time. So are there any questions or comments on that? Okay, we'll move right along to page 8, Bill 7 dash 21, Mr. Crandall, Donie Regulation.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, th- this bill, uh, actually mimics, uh, something that we did several years ago for, I believe, the Owens Mills Town Center. Um, we're, we're faced in Baltimore County, thankfully, with, uh, opportunities that the code does not necessarily contemplate or treat very well in terms of permitting processes. Uh, one of those projects is Trade Point Atlantic, uh, at, i- i- in the, at the Spars Point property in the 7th District. And, um, so, um, if, if you've, I know that each of you have toured the, the, the site there. Uh, maybe not so recently. I know the Councilman Marks has. And I live right down the street, so I drive by all the time and I'm, I'm, I'm there, uh, on a monthly basis. And, um, you can see how massive the structures are and Baltimore County sign regulations aren't appropriate for the size of these buildings. So, um, I'm introducing this legislation to, uh, just ease the permitting process for signage, uh, on, uh, on a manufacturing heavy zone, um, such as the one that Trade Point Atlantic is, is, um, is cited on. And, um, I'm hoping to have, uh, the, the council's, uh, uh, continual support of the Trade Point Atlantic project, which has meant so much to Baltimore County and, uh, and promises so much to Baltimore County. So, um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Um, there's no question about it. Those are some of the biggest structures now county bound. And I guess big structures need good sign.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask Councilman Crandall if this is, is this specific to Trade Point Atlantic or is it applicable countywide? It's, it's applicable, uh, um, I'll defer to Mr. Bostwick for, for some of the detail here, but it, it is applicable countywide, but only in certain circumstances and Trade Point Atlantic and the Owens Mills TOD may be the only sites that I'm aware of in, in Baltimore County where, where this would apply. Mr. Bostwick, am I correct there?
Um, Mr. Crandall, um, it, it is only applicable to what the, what is defined in the, in section 256 of the regulations as large tract.
And so in large tracts, we're talking about at least 3,100 acres?
I believe so, yes. Um, I can, uh, I can double check real quick. Um.
Okay.
256.5, it has to be at least 25 acres in an area that is under common ownership or control. And it has to be, has to be zoned, um, MH or MHIM.
What is that again, uh, Mr. Secretary, MH?
Yes, sir. It, it, it applies to attractive land, uh, in the MH or MHIM zone. The IM is the overlay district and it must have at least 25 acres in area that is under common ownership or control. So it's, it's really for, uh, unusually large tracts of which there aren't a ton of them left in the county.
Gotcha. So I, the reason I'm asking is I have a community meeting later on this evening where, uh, one of the, my constituents has asked about this specific bill. And I just wanted to be able to explain it appropriately. So that's 25 acres or more common ownership MH or MHIM. Uh, and it's specific, and then you've mentioned the overly district. Overly, did you say overly or overlay?
The IM overlay.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Overly, you're gonna, you're gonna get Councilwoman Evans and Councilman. I just want.
And 2,500 acres, yeah.
2,500, okay. That's a, that's two zeros that make a big difference. Yeah, this, yeah, this, this is very specific to the Trade Point Atlantic property. Um, and again, and Councilmember Patoka, I, I invite you to the 7th District to, uh, to take a tour of the progress that has been made. Uh, it's, uh, you, you drive around there and it's absolutely incredible what, what is happening there with the, the, the modern infrastructure that's been built in such a short period of time. And, um, and if you, you see a building of this scale, uh, we're talking about buildings of, um, um, uh, a million square feet uh, with, and they're, they're three or four stories. Uh, their signage just deserves to have something appropriate to the, to the scale of the building. So, um. Got it. That, that, that's the point of this legislation. Well, thank you, and I will take you up on that invitation. Thanks so much, Councilman Crandall. Very good.
Yeah, Councilman Crandall.
Will you hear someone else?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Marks.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much. Again, I'll echo what I said before, you know, the council, uh, uh, and I think all of us, but all of us were involved with this, approved a financial aid package for Trade Point Atlantic. And, uh, quite frankly, it is our fiduciary responsibility to take an interest in places like that. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I think it's a good thing for us to tour other parts of Baltimore County. Uh, so we can see what's going on in those communities. Uh, so Councilman Crandall, I want to thank you very much for, um, your leadership on this, the leadership of the county executive. Uh, it is certainly a, um, a place where we can be very proud of.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilman Marks. And, um, thank you, Councilman Crandall, and.
And, and, Mr. Chair, if I could just, just add that, um, uh, the community was not uninvolved in, in this, uh, piece of legislation. Uh, Trade Point Atlantic took it upon themselves to engage the local community association and, uh, present to them what the legislation was about and what it meant for them and, and, and the aesthetics of, of the area. And we've received, uh, no indication from the community that, um, uh, that, that anyone's bothered by this. Uh, most of the signage is internal to the, the, the industrial site itself. So, um, uh, just wanted to, uh, to put that on the record.
All right. Thank you very much. And, uh, last but certainly not least, page 9, Bill 8 dash 21, Councilman Marks.
You, uh, hold on. Yeah, thank, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Bill 821 would add cleaning and restoration, uh, services to the uses permitted by right in the community business CB zone. Uh, I'm actually going to introduce an amendment to tighten this, so it only applies to the Perry Hall Commercial Revitalization District. So that does not have, uh, spill over effects into other parts of the county. Uh, simply put, this would allow an existing cleaning and restoration business to be a conforming use. Uh, that business, uh, will tear down an older structure and improve an area in the heart of the Perry Hall Revitalization District. Uh, so I urge your support of this legislation.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Are there any questions or comments? Uh, I want to just thank everybody for their participation this evening. We wish everybody well, stay safe. Are there any additional comments by anybody before we sign off? Okay. Thank you very much. Everybody be well. Thank you.
And thanks everyone.
Thanks, Mr. Crandall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.